This is going to be a fun one. We're talking about some of these guys that are organic. Come on over, come on over.
Actually, they're non-GMO verified, they're not actually organic.
Okay, your husband too, and your brother-in-law. Come on over. Get on either side of me. Many of you knew Marjorie and Marvin Browdy.
[noise]
Marvin Browdy was a-
Hold, wait a second, Bill. Shh. Be respectful to Mr. Rosendahl's honoree.
Marvin and Marjorie Browdy were one of those incredible, dynamic couples that live in our memory and will forever. Dynamic on every level. I had the pleasure of knowing Marvin most of his 32 years that he was in government, and his wife. They both made a difference in everything that they did. In fact, you know, us politicians, we always think about our legacy. What are we going to leave behind? Will people remember me? And all of that. Well, Marvin didn't need to put a legacy together. He did it just by his hard work. Those mountains in the Palisades and going through the hills that are now part of the state preservation that are historic and that forever will remain wilderness was Marvin Browdy. And if you get on your bicycle and you want to ride on the bike path, that's Marvin Browdy. If you want to fight oil and you want to deal with some of the most powerful people on earth who wanted to dig up the beach and drill for oil, that's Marvin Browdy. His legacy and his wife, who was so engaged in so many issues and psychiatric stuff. I was just telling Marvin's daughter, Lisa, that I was sitting out there with Mike Fuer talking about his race for city attorney, but it was in the Marjorie Browdy chair. And you know, we go to the valley when we hold our council meetings, you see the name Marvin Browdy. But their contribution to all of us was phenomenal. But obviously, one of their contributions was bringing in this great daughter of theirs, Lisa, who's sitting- Liza. Now, let me just go through this. Beanfields Talking. There's a lot of good things that go on here today. We're honoring an LA-based company that produces healthy and delicious snacks. And we're honoring Liza Browdy, the daughter of legendary councilman Marvin Browdy, and her husband Reed Gilliden. There he is. And his brother-in-law, who manages- his brother, her brother-in-law, who manages their business. Beanfields Nacho Beans and Rice Tortilla Chips, you all have them there. Best of the show. That's the award they got in 2012 for the Natural Products Expo West, the nation's largest natural food product expo. Beanfields also makes an amazing tasty vegan nacho chips, which are 100% delicious and 100% dairy-free. Beanfields believes great tasting snacks should also be good for you, good for your families, good for your farmers, and good for the planet. They take wholesome and nutritious beans and blend them with long-grain rice to create delicious snacks that are loaded with fiber and protein. In fact, Beanfields Beans and Rice Chips contain double the fiber and protein of most corn tortillas or potato chips. No, I'm not a marketing guy, and I don't really- They are delicious alternatives to the empty calorie snacks that usually fill the snack aisles. Beanfields snacks are famed, and because of that, all over the United States. They're gluten-free, cholesterol-free, trans-fat-free, preservative-free, and free of every one of the FDA's eight most common ingredients that trigger food allergies. Above all, they're a Los Angeles company that have created a better snack choice with the philosophy that great taste and good nutrition can coexist. We hope you enjoy the crispy delicious snacks on your desk, and we want to thank Liza and Reed for making the world a healthier place in which to live. And I want to give them, from my heart to their heart, a half a dozen eggs for my chickens that eat organic stuff too. I'd like to say a few words.
Oh, Mr. Rosendahl, before you speak, we have two other members in the queue that would like to say something. Mr. Labange. No, Mr. Labange, go to your desk, Mr. Labange.
You've been eating some of the chips, Tom?
He's just bouncing around the council chambers as usual.
I just wanted to say something. Congratulations on this endeavor. But your mother and your father were like these pillars in this building. I've been here 37 and a half years, and remember your dad over there? And he lost a number of battles, but he won many battles. And he never was- when he got defeated, he just is like my high school football coach would say, "You get knocked down, Labange, you get up and keep going." Marvin Browdy always got up and he rose. And the eloquent introduction by Mr. Rosendahl, the father of the Santa Monica Mountains. So I just- and your mother and her very special plaque right outside City Hall, which is so important. So I want to congratulate you, and I look forward to the taste and the healthy taste of these treats. Thank you, congratulations.
Mr. Caretz.
Well, these are really good, by the way. That's not what I arose to say. I also want to acknowledge your family, and particularly your father, who I reminded you of earlier. I started my political involvement as a staff person in the San Fernando Valley Field Office for Marvin Browdy. And learned some critical lessons, which turned out to be important, because a year later, when the city of West Hollywood was founded, I was one of five staff people that handled all the things the city needed in the first couple of years that over 100 people are doing now. And I was able to do that job as the only person with any government experience because of all the things I learned working with Marvin. He was kind of a hero of mine. I worked on some of the key issues he worked on, on the environment and smoking, before I got involved. And then I had the honor, as a West Hollywood council member, when he passed the LA Smoking Ordinance, banning smoking in bars and restaurants. I had West Hollywood do it at the same time and got some other cities to do it. So it became a regional ban, and it provided the momentum for state legislation and other legislation, and it was all very exciting. So your father did a lot for the city and meant a lot to me personally, and he was a good friend for all the years that we both served in elective office together. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. It's great that you're here now, contributing to Los Angeles and the world in a different way. And these are great, by the way. My daughter's a vegan, and she is allergic to gluten, so a gluten-free vegan chip with lots of protein will be very well received now that I know about it. So thank you for everything that you do, and wanted to acknowledge your father.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. The floor is returned to you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be presenting this certificate. And it says, "The Certificate of Appreciation for Beanfield Chips on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council. Congratulations on being named Best of Show at the 2012 Natural Products Exposition. Your first-place prize at the biggest annual natural products exposition in the country proves that your snacks are not only nutritious, but also delicious and crispalicious. Your products prove that great tasting snacks can be good for you, good for the farmers, and good for the planet."
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, members of the council and esteemed guests. As a fast-growing Los Angeles snack company, Beanfields is so happy that you're helping us celebrate. I feel like you guys have said a lot about our snack. It's also non-GMO verified, that's another one of its qualities. Since we started Beanfields only a little over a year ago, Reed and I, and Roy, and our friend Omrit, you might think this is the first legislative body that has ever been served our chips, but actually, it's the second. Some months ago, the Dry Bean Council of Michigan served our chips to their state legislature. The beans in our chips come from Michigan, and the farmers there appreciate our commitment to make chips that are farmed and made in the USA. My dad, Marvin Browdy, loved this city. He took mentorship seriously, and I'm glad to see his memory still alive here. Our family has been health food nuts for four generations since Battle Creek, Michigan. Some of you shared meals of granola with my dad in his office, but what you may not know is that when he went home to a house full of feminists and was told to make dinner, he always made the same thing: veggie dogs and vegetarian baked beans. Beans are one of the most nutritious foods on the planet. We make them right here in the USA. They use less fertilizer and far less water than almost any other form of protein. They can grow on marginal land, in harsher conditions than most crops. The USDA classifies beans as both a protein and a vegetable, and the Diabetes Association of America puts beans first on their list of recommended foods. This is why we say our beans are good for families, good for farmers, good for our planet, and we accept this acknowledgement on behalf of the humble bean. Thank you, Bill. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And they're delicious, folks. I've just tried them. Thank you.
Well, you should know, I've had two people come up to me as you were speaking saying that they taste pretty good. So it is tasty. I cannot wait to eat mine. Again, congratulations. Okay, we have a quorum, I do believe, Madam Clerk. So before we continue with our presentations, let's quickly go through the agenda. If you would please call the roll.
[inaudible] We are Caretz, Recorion, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves. Mr. Caretz seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Kocorian seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 1 to June 5th and to continue Item 2 to May 8th.
Without objection, those items are continued.
Items 3 through 8 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. I do want to hold on behalf of Ms. Perry, Item 6. Do we have any cards?
There are cards on Items 3, 5, 6, and 7.
Members, specials, specials members. Okay, on the remaining items, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Let's tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. I have- we're going to move to Item 6, Mr. Parks, if you're ready. But before you start, we have one public comment card on Item 6. Mr. Sacks, if you could please come forward.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I don't really want to piggyback on the personal tragedy involved in what this reward stands for, but my question come up here is, recently, there was another tragedy that occurred at USC, where two students got killed. And the LAPD and the city got together. The LAPD is sending 20 extra police over. The county, the city district attorney is assigning another city attorney. For what purpose? Because they don't prosecute felonies? I don't know. But I'm just curious, whatever reason or whatever area this tragedy occurred in, is the city taking the same steps? Is the city mobilizing an extra 20 police to that department? Is the city attorney sending an extra prosecuting attorney? I know that in Wilmington, there was a rash of murders this past year. Has the city moved to put 20 extra police there? Has the city moved to put a city attorney there? No? How come? Don't they deserve the same services being given at USC? Again, I'm not looking to piggyback on the tragedy that occurred that's the reason for this reward, but it seems that in certain areas, the city and the city council and the police are quick to jump, but in other areas, maybe they need more redevelopment. Oh, oh yeah, we'll get to it, but first we have to have a committee meeting, or first we have to do something else. Who's stepping up? Who's the council people to ask for the extra police? And why the disparity in choosing some areas to get that extra coverage and some areas that remain under the radar? Who's going to step up and say, "This doesn't seem right. If you can mobilize 20 police for USC area, you should be able to mobilize 20 police off of the city."
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Ms. Latonya Brown and Andre Brown and Gail Washington and the family members to come up to the middle podium. This reward motion is in behalf of Jan Perry, as it's in her district. As the family is coming forward, just to give you the background, on Saturday, December 31st, 2011, at approximately 11:55 PM, 14-year-old Jude Emerson Burns Jr. was shot multiple times in front of his home at 1349 West 61st Street. Rescue ambulance 57 responded to the location and transported the victim to the California Hospital. On January 1st, 2012, Jude Emerson Burns Jr. succumbed to his injuries. And so we'd like to- family, if you could come up to the podium here, all of the family. And Ms. Washington is going to be the spokesperson for the family. If you could introduce the family to the council, also to the public that's looking at Channel 35.
Hi, I'm Gail Washington, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Brown family, the mother, Latonya Brown, Lisa Brown, Shayna Brown. I just want to thank Charlie Beck and the entire Los Angeles Police Department for all their hard work and searching everything. They're responsible for the way that we feel. I also like to thank Councilwoman Jane Perry and Mr. Parks, the Los Angeles Council, for pledging the $50,000 reward for the potential witnesses to leading up to the murder of Jude Emerson Burns Jr. December 31st, December 2011, at 12:50 PM, Jude was standing outside waiting on the fireworks show while talking to his friend on the cellular phone. A car approached abruptly and started shooting. We're talking about a little boy whose life was ahead of him. He had so much potential. The difference in the world he would have made. He had dreams, dreams that every boy had growing up. There won't be any proms, any colleges. There will be no graduation, no proms, no colleges for Jude. This is a mother's dream, to watch her kids blossom and striving to making something of themselves. He's had so much promise. Jude was not a gang member, and nor did he socialize with any gang members. This is a cry for help. I'm asking, and the family is asking, those in the community to have the information that may lead to the arrest of those responsible. To come forward as a grieving mother, I implore the killer or killers to turn yourselves in, so this family, my family, our family, and many other families can have closure. My heart, our hearts bleed for Junior Sayah's mother, and as myself, I am a grieving mother. I have too lost a child. I have walked that walk, I have talked that talk, so I feel my family's pain. And the worst pain of it all is not having any justice at all. So please, anyone with any information, can you please come forward? This is killing this family all over again, and I thank everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, again, for the public. Saturday, December 31st, 11:55 AM, 14-year-old Jude Emerson Burns Jr. was shot multiple times at his home at 1349 West 61st Street. The public and LAPD is asking for anyone that has information to contact 77th homicide at 213-485-1386. And so on behalf of Ms. Perry and her district, today I'm asking that we move forward on this $50,000 reward, asking for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person or persons responsible for this murder. And so we'd ask that we have an eye vote for this $50,000 reward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and to the family, we will all pray for justice, and thank you for coming down and showing the courage to get on television and to state your case. Our prayers are with you all.
And we thank you.
No, you're very welcome. It's the least we can do. On this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Fourth with, Mr. Garcetti, are you ready to make the presentation on behalf of Council District 1?
And it gives me great joy today, Mr. Reyes has asked me to step up, so on behalf of Mr. Reyes and myself, I want to present today a very special and exciting day to recognize Dia del Nicaragüense for the first time ever in the city of Los Angeles, Nicaraguan Day in Los Angeles. Please give a round of applause to our visitors from the Nicaraguan-American community. It is a momentous occasion for the entire Los Angeles community, and I'm happy to celebrate the Nicaraguan community that resides here. California is home to the second-largest concentration of Nicaraguans, most of them living here in Los Angeles. I think Los Angeles may be the second-largest city of Nicaraguans in the world, and their story is just like ours. Nicaraguans have immigrated to the United States in small groups since the early 1900s, escaping poverty and oppression, but it was not until the 1979 Nicaraguan Revolution that we saw the largest amount of documented refugees come to the States. We can all relate to this story. My family came from the South to this country. My grandfather was born during the Mexican Revolution, and in time of war, war pushed him and his family here. My great-grandmother carried him over the border in her arms. And the heroic stories of Nicaraguans who came here, who made that trek north to find a better life for themselves and to come to Los Angeles, we all know that seeking refuge in America and chasing the American dream is central to the history of our city. And Los Angeles is incredibly grateful for the contributions of this community. The Nicaraguan community has opened, have opened small businesses, restaurants, my favorite in, well, Mr. Reyes's district being LA 27, and have been active in neighborhood projects throughout the city. And Nicaraguans are a significant part of the diverse and cultural landscape of Los Angeles, and it's my pleasure to declare May 3rd as El Dia del Nicaragüense aquí en Los Ángeles. Es un honor tener la comunidad, todos estos líderes, los representantes de la comunidad nicaragüense. I also want to say on a personal note, I was- yes, Mr. Labange. Thank you, Mr. Labange. And I also want to say, we're very lucky to have the Council General here, Jose Alberto Acevedo, who will say words in a few moments. But I traveled to Nicaragua a couple of years ago and saw the beauty in the country. I have a couple of different employees who have worked for me here, Nicaraguan-American, who have provided a voice here in the community. Nicaragua is an amazing country. It's a beautiful land, from the islands in the Caribbean to the lakes in the middle of the country, to looking at the oldest continually inhabited city in the mainland of the Americas that is in Nicaragua. Nicaragua is the story of the Americas. Nicaraguans are the story of Los Angeles. And our city is great and strong because of the contributions of Nicaraguans. And I know Mr. Reyes is very excited. I'm very excited to be able to declare this day. We know it will be the first of many, many days. So happy Nicaraguan Day in the city of Los Angeles. And with that, I'd like to ask Council General Jose Alberto Acevedo to say a few words as well.
Happy. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Muy buenos días, señores concejales de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Buenos días, prestigiosos miembros del Consejo Cultural José de la Cruz Mena. En mi carácter de vicepresidente, me dirijo a este honorable consejo municipal. Para saludarlos y agradecerles. La proclama del Día del Nicaragüense. Distinción otorgada hace tres años. Que este mismo consejo tuvo para nuestro comité. Cuyo objetivo es promover la cultura nicaragüense. Su objetivo es promover la cultura nicaragüense. Entre nuestra comunidad residente en esta ciudad. Entre nuestra comunidad residente en esta ciudad. Como dije antes, hace tres años. Como dije antes, hace tres años. Ustedes, señores concejales. Ustedes, señores concejales. Nos distingieron con la proclama. Distinguió a nosotros con una proclama. Otorgada a nuestro comité. Presentado a nuestro comité. Por ser gestor ante ustedes. Por ser gestor ante ustedes. Para la distinción. La cual mandata celebrar el Día del Nicaragüense en Los Ángeles. Que dicta la celebración del Día del Nicaragüense en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. En California, el día 3 de mayo. En California, el día 3 de mayo. Lo cual agradezco en nombre del comité. Por lo que estoy muy agradecido en nombre del comité. En los años 2010 y 2011. En los años 2010 y 2011. De ustedes, señores concejales. De ustedes, señores concejales. Recibimos tal distinción. Recibimos tal reconocimiento. Pero este año 2012. Pero este año 2012. Inexplicablemente tenemos conocimiento que la proclama otorgada. Inevitablemente tenemos conocimiento que la reconocimiento que nos fue otorgado. Que creemos que debe ser definitiva. Que creemos que debe ser definitiva. Según reza el texto otorgado. Según reza el texto otorgado. Será sustituido por un reconocimiento. Será sustituido por un reconocimiento. Por lo que preguntamos al honorable concejal Ed Reyes. Por lo que preguntamos al honorable concejal Ed Reyes. Y ustedes, señores concejales. Y ustedes, señores concejales. El por qué tal distinción. El por qué tal reconocimiento. Como expresé antes. Como expresé antes. Tal distinción debe ser permanentemente. Tal reconocimiento debe ser permanentemente. Por lo que le suplicamos, concejal Reyes. Por lo que le suplicamos, concejal Reyes. Nos aclare el motivo de tal determinación. Para explicarnos la razón por la cual. Tenemos conocimiento. Tenemos conocimiento. Que otros comités. Que otros comités. Que han solicitado tal distinción. Que han solicitado tal reconocimiento. Por sus respectivos países. Por sus respectivos países. Se lo han otorgado en forma permanente. Se lo han otorgado en forma permanente. ¿Por qué no a nosotros? ¿Por qué no a nosotros? Estimado concejal Reyes. Estimado concejal Reyes. En que hemos fallado para unir. En que hemos fallado para unir. Culturalmente a nuestra comunidad. Culturalmente a nuestra comunidad. No se ha logrado. Una vez más. Y no ha llegado. Reiteramos nuestro agradecimiento. Una vez más, me gustaría reiterar. O recibirnos en este día tan especial. Agradecimiento por recibirnos en este día tan especial. Para los nicaragüenses. Para los nicaragüenses. Deseándoles. People. Éxito. Y deseamos gran éxito. En sus decisiones en beneficio de nuestra gente. A todos ustedes en su toma de decisiones. A beneficio de todos nuestros pueblos. Que Dios bendiga este consejo. Que Dios bendiga este consejo. Y a nuestra comunidad en Los Ángeles, California. Y que Dios bendiga nuestra comunidad en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, California.
Gracias. Miembros, vamos a tener algunos desafíos de quorum, así que tendrán que trabajar conmigo aquí mientras intento hacer que nuestro negocio se lleve adelante hoy. Así que en este punto, señor fiscal de la ciudad, voy a pasar rápidamente al comentario general público. Y tan pronto como el último orador que llamo termine, cerraré el comentario general público. Con eso dicho, Antonio Ramírez, Arnold Sacks y Dollhouse Dude, si quisieran, por favor, venir al centro. Por favor. Señora Ramírez, ahora puede irse.
Esto es una cuestión de principio. Tengo que primero disculpar a Pete Wilson, porque tenía razón. Si hubiéramos tomado acción por Prop 187, no habría una epidemia de aliens criminales ilegales ni violento crimen latino gang bang world y las varias ciudades sanctuarias de safe haven que abarcan Nate and Abethi, estos malvados, 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 y malvados, odio, diabolicos deviantes. Además, bajo nuestras reputaciones arruinadas, el señor Antonio Villarrealgoza y sus co-conspiradores, co-membros del consejo, Cardenas, Wizard, Alarcon, Reyes, Zain, Englander, Herb Wesen y el oficio de la fiscalía de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, que continúan permitiendo y perpetuando el imperio criminal latino y gang bang world. Me gustaría agradecer y dar mucho aplauso al honrado gobernador de Arizona, Jan Brewer, por tomar una postura dura contra la inmigración ilegal y su perseverancia en el reglamento de la ley. Y cité: "Tengo un deber de cumplir con la constitución y una responsabilidad de proteger al pueblo de Arizona". Además, me preocupa porque muchos gang bangers están y están buscando entrar en el ejército de Estados Unidos para aprender el uso de todas las armas y logística y eventualmente derrocar y sabotear al ejército de Estados Unidos. Bravo al ejército de Estados Unidos, mis heros. Desafortunadamente, muchos aliens criminales ilegales han infiltrado el Departamento de la Servicio de la LAPD y ni siquiera hablan inglés. Chefe de policía, Becca, han pervertido el reglamento de la ley. Gracias a Dios a todos nuestros agentes de la LAPD, los aviones de emergencia y los pilotos de la Guardia Coast Guard. Bravo. Finalmente, quiero agradecer a Gordon Ramsay por cocinar mi comida mexicana para el 5 de mayo porque tiene excelente higiene y tiene gran orgullo en trabajar en un ambiente seguro, comidas saludables y saludables para todos nosotros. En sombra, ¡viva! Militares estadounidenses y aviadores. El honrado gobernador Jan Brewer de Arizona y todos nuestros pilotos y aviones. Bravo. Te agradezco. Y como mexicano estadounidense respetuoso, soy un mexicano orgulloso que me ha golpeado la cabeza para aprender inglés. Y te agradezco.
Gracias. El siguiente es Arnold Sacks. Seguido por Dollhouse Dude y Bobby Cooper. Bobby Cooper, si pudieran, por favor, trabajar su camino hacia el centro. Señor Sacks.
Gracias. Buenos días, Arnold Sacks. Un par de cosas. Hoy en el Daily Breeze, y estoy seguro de que aparece en el Daily News, tiene un cómic editorial sobre el MTA. Escucho que varios nuevos proyectos de transitar de condado podrían llegar pronto. Es una parte del canto. Mientras tanto, este vehículo ya llega y muestra un autobús con tasas de transitar a largo plazo. El único problema es que falta dos cosas. Prop A y Prop C, que también son incrementos de impuestos de venta a la media. Y dado que la medida R genera unos 1 billón de dólares, cerca, tal vez un poco más, al año en ingresos de impuestos de transitar para el MTA, Prop A y Prop C están haciendo exactamente lo mismo. Así que el MTA no está solo obteniendo 1 billón de dólares al año en ingresos de impuestos de transitar, sino que en realidad está obteniendo más de 3 billones de dólares al año en ingresos de impuestos de transitar. ¿Y qué están haciendo con el dinero? Cortando servicio. Haciendo planes ridículos para construir un subway a través de una zona de falla de terremoto. Eh, menos de la investigación. Así que adelante, apoye al señor y sus planes porque quiere continuar con la medida R. Y en 10 años, habrá otra medida. Así que será hasta 4 billones de dólares al año para el MTA. Con eso dicho, además de los temas sobre el presupuesto de la ciudad, aquí hay un pequeño artículo que estaba en el Daily Breeze sobre una empresa llamada Pelican Products. Que fabrican lámparas y bolsillos de agua duras. En este artículo, se dice: "California perdió casi un tercio de sus trabajos de fabricación entre 2000 y 2010, disminuyendo de 1,84 mil a 1,24 mil". "Step up, city council, that 600,000 jobs lost in the county alone."
Gracias. Señor Dude, seguido por señor Cooper. Señor Cooper, no veo a usted. Si no está aquí cuando llamo su nombre una segunda vez, no se podrá hablar. Y luego el último orador será Candido Mores en el Valle. Vaya, señor Dude.
Sí, mi nombre es Juan Alcalá. Mi nombre internet es Dollhouse Dude, como Barbie. Y desearía que pudiera comer esas chips, pero no tengo dientes. Hay muy pocas servicios de salud para la gente. Hay mucho dinero perdido en otras cosas. De todos modos, probablemente conozcan de qué voy a hablar hoy. La vivienda para cada ser humano en el mundo. Ustedes, el consejo de Los Ángeles, pueden liderar el mundo en cambiar la forma en que hacemos el real estate. Somos inteligentes lo suficientemente como que sé que se inscribieron en el cargo para ayudar a la gente. No ser llamado enemigo público número uno. No ser llamado todos esos nombres que se llaman. Saben. Que eres crúpulo, que se inscribieron en el cargo solo para ganar millones de dólares, bla, bla, bla. Puede que haya algo así, pero creo que básicamente, su objetivo básico era ayudar a la gente. 我现在在要求一个建筑来 housing la organización no lucrativa llamada United World of Free and Clear. No sé cuáles pasos tenemos que tomar. Sé que para Occupy LA, estábamos ofreciendo un edificio por un dólar al año. Creo que podemos pagarle un dólar al año por un edificio para que podamos realmente obtener una nueva forma de hacer negocios para el mundo entero. Gracias.
Gracias. Bobby Cooper, va, va, va. Ahora, si pudieran, vamos al Valle para Candido Mores. Feliz viernes, Candido.
Buenos días, señor, y gracias, y feliz 5 de mayo. Candido, el presidente, el proud residente del 12º distrito, donde nuestro módulo es de Chatsworth a San Pedro, del lado oriental al lado occidental, señor presidente. Somos una ciudad y un pueblo. La última vez que estuve aquí, estuve aquí para agradecer a mi consejero, consejero Inger, por la pasear una calle llamada Sesnon. Y a nuestra sorpresa, esta semana tenemos señales de detención. Y, señor presidente, es increíble lo que pueden hacer las señales de detención para la comunidad, cuán seguros pueden hacerlas. Durante años, por viernes, viernes a las noches, sesta, Sesnon fue usado como una barrera de tráfico. Y así teníamos miedo de que muriesen niños o personas mayores, no se pasaban por ahí. Y así quiero agradecer a mi consejero por esas señales de detención. Y, usted sabe, señor presidente, miembros del consejo, son las pequeñas cosas. Que si cuidas las pequeñas cosas en nuestros distritos, desde el 1º hasta el 15º distrito, son las pequeñas cosas. Si cuidamos las pequeñas cosas, entonces estamos felices y podemos seguir juntos a resolver los problemas grandes. Pero cada distrito de esta ciudad tiene una calle cruz que es peligra. Y así les estoy pidiendo, señor presidente, miembros del consejo, que salgan y encuentren esas calles peligrosas, esas calles cruzadas que son peligrosas para nuestros hijos y para nuestros mayores y que corremos esos problemas. Sé que los fondos son cortos, pero sé que si trabajamos juntos podemos hacerlo. Así que les estoy pidiendo una vez más, señor presidente, miembros del consejo, hagamos nuestras calles y nuestra ciudad un lugar más seguro. Y normalmente, mantendré mi boca cerrada cuando alguien else hace un comentario, pero tengo que hacer comentarios en relación con la señora que habló sobre los inmigrantes ilegales y esto y eso, y cuán malos son. ¿Sabes qué? Quiero, como americano, de origen mexicano e indio, sexta generación. Esperaría que ella pudiera encontrar algo de compasión en sus corazones. Sí, tenemos que asegurar nuestras fronteras. Sí, la gente debe aprender inglés, igual que yo debería haber aprendido español, pero tenga algo de compasión. No se equivoque con la gente. Este no es el momento de equivoque con la gente, de tocar la gente. Soy orgulloso de nuestra vida militar. Soy orgulloso de nuestra servicio familiar.
Gracias, Candido. Y estoy de acuerdo contigo. Bien, señor Wizard, pueden empezar a prepararse, pero voy a llamar al señor Arnold Sacks para el artículo 5. Vamos a pasar al artículo 5. Oh, señor fiscal de la ciudad, el comentario general público ya está cerrado. Vayan, señor Sacks.
Gracias. Buenos días de nuevo, Arnold Sacks. Lo llevé a este tema solo debido al hecho de que están introduciendo el presupuesto a ser pagado por el tiempo libre. Y supongo que sería para el policía de servicios generales a ser pagado por el tiempo libre porque la LAPD no se paga por el tiempo libre. Pueden trabajar por el tiempo libre, pero ese financiamiento o esas horas son transferidas a las vacaciones. Así que me pregunto, basado en la propuesta de fusionar el servicio general con la LAPD y eliminar, ¿entonces tendrían su tiempo libre eliminado?
Arnold, ese no es el artículo 5. Ni siquiera está cerca.
El artículo 5 es una celebración. Y parte de la celebración es pagada con el tiempo libre, señor.
Bien, ese es un poco desagradable, pero sí, te lo daré.
Lo llamé, lo mencioné. Ves, ese es uno de los problemas, señor. Mencioné mis primeros comentarios donde llamé a este tema sobre el tiempo libre en parte de este proyecto. Las palabras primeras, ese es el problema. Y, señor, solo iba a hablar un minuto. Me gustaría tener ese minuto reservado porque ahora es mi turno porque quiero hablar.
Gracias, señor Sacks. En este artículo, abramos el rol. Oh, espérenme un momento, señor Lavand. ¿Podemos, señor Lavand, tenemos un serio desafío de quorum?
Sí, tengo una pregunta rápida algún tiempo.
Bien, entonces, abramos el rol en este artículo, cerramos el rol, tabulamos el voto.
11 ayes.
Señor Wizard.
Cuestión, ¿es señor Wizard?
Sí, señor.
Cuestión técnica para el fiscal de la ciudad. El precioso señor Sacks vive en Lenox, California, y viene todos los días y nos da ideas. ¿Hay alguna diferencia en eso? Si pudieran, me dieran una respuesta la próxima semana en cuanto a qué obligación tenemos para escuchar su opinión, aunque vive en Lenox, California. Gracias.
Señor Wizard, el asiento, el asiento, señor Wizard, pertenece a usted.
Gracias, señor presidente. Y señor presidente, como nuestros invitados llegan al podium, me gustaría decir que me da mucho placer presentar en las chambas del consejo dos resoluciones muy especiales en homenaje a el 5 de mayo, que es una celebración que se celebrará en todo los Estados Unidos y México este fin de semana. Y para aquellos de ustedes que no conocen la historia del 5 de mayo, se refiere a una batalla que tuvo lugar cerca de la capital, la ciudad de Puebla, en el estado mexicano del mismo nombre, cuando 5,000 mestizo y zapotec indios inequipados derrotaron al ejército francés más armado y entrenado el 5 de mayo de 1862. La importancia de esa batalla ha cambiado con los años, pero ciertamente se convirtió en un símbolo de la orgullo mexicano, incluido aquí en los Estados Unidos, donde los mexicanos estadounidenses comenzaron a celebrar el 5 de mayo tan pronto como la guerra civil, ya que la mayoría se identificaba con el norte y los franceses estaban vinculados al sur, y después como un buen gesto de vecindario entre los Estados Unidos y México en los años 1950s, y luego como un símbolo de la superación de la diversidad en los años 60 y 70 entre los chicanos luchando por los derechos civiles. Y estoy feliz de estar aquí con Eric Garcetti para hacer esta presentación. Y hoy, el 5 de mayo se ha convertido en como el día de Saint Patrick's Day, donde todos se... señor Lavand. Donde todos se pueden ser mexicanos o irlandeses por un día y disfrutar de un buen tiempo. Así que todos podrían ser mexicanos este 5 de mayo. Pero esta mañana, me gustaría traerlo un poco más a su original intención reconociendo a la gente que es en realidad del estado en el que tuvo lugar la batalla de Puebla y que ciertamente son muy orgullosos de su herencia mexicana. Estoy acompañado hoy por Pedro Ramos. Pedro Ramos. Y un grupo de residentes del estado de Puebla para esta celebración, incluyendo un invitado muy especial que introduciré en sólo un minuto, pero mucha gente sabe que está aquí ya. Me gustaría reconocer a Pedro y la Unión de Poblanos en el exterior por el gran trabajo que hacen en nombre de nuestra comunidad inmigrante mexicana y mantener las tradiciones del gran estado de Puebla vivo aquí en Los Ángeles. Los Ángeles, como saben, es la casa de la segunda mayor población de mexicanos fuera de la Ciudad de México. El nacimiento de Los Ángeles, El Pueblo, está justo a la calle de aquí y nuestros rumores mexicanos vuelven a su fundación cuando, ¿cuántos pobladores, Eric?
42.
42 pobladores llegaron en 1781. Los mexicanos han estado aquí y han venido aquí de todas partes de México durante mucho tiempo. Lo que la gente puede no darse cuenta es que los estados de México son tan diferentes en términos de cultura, tradiciones, incluso acentos, igual que las diferencias que ves en la gente de estados y regiones aquí en los Estados Unidos, digamos el sur, en comparación con Nueva York. Y algunos incluso dicen que hay un acento de Los Ángeles también. Los nacionales mexicanos que viven en los Estados Unidos tienen gran orgullo de sus estados nacionales y a menudo forman clubes para ayudar a esos estados o para ayudar a los inmigrantes de sus estados nacionales aquí en los Estados Unidos. Y yo mismo, como inmigrante de Zacatecas, estoy muy orgulloso de ser un ciudadano americano y estoy agradecido por todo lo que este país me ha ofrecido. También estoy muy orgulloso de mis rumores mexicanos y de ser del estado de Zacatecas. Solo desearía que la batalla de Puebla hubiera sido la batalla de Zacatecas. Así que hay una batalla. Hay una famosa batalla de Zacatecas durante la Revolución de 1910. Pero quiero reconocer a la Unión de Poblano y el exterior por el tipo de trabajo y servicios que realmente ayudan a la comunidad inmigrante latino aquí en Los Ángeles y honrando y manteniendo nuestras tradiciones culturales también. Así que con eso, déjenme presentarles, en nombre de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, una resolución a Pedro Ramos y la Unión de Poblanos y el exterior por el trabajo que hacen para mantener el 5 de mayo vivo y por las grandes tradiciones y cultura que traen a los Estados Unidos y Los Ángeles. Felicidades. Muchas gracias. Y señoras y señores, también tenemos un invitado muy especial aquí hoy. Tengo que agradecer a la Unión de Poblanos por traer uno de los hijos más famosos de Puebla con ellos hoy y hablando de nadie más que Alex Lora. Él es el frente para la legendaria banda rock y roll mexicana, El Tri. Alex es un pobre pobre y fácilmente uno de los más famosos rockers de México que con El Tri ha estado encantando a las audiencias durante más de 40 años con su música. Si alguna vez tuvieron el placer de escuchar a Alex sing, él tiene una voz hecha para rock and roll y su grupo, El Tri, con sus rumores de ritmo y de blues han sido comparados con los Rolling Stones. Pero en verdad, El Tri son iconos en su propia right y ninguno es más grande o más brillante que Alex Lora. Nacido José Alejandro, mi tocayo, Lora Serna en Puebla, este talentoso músico y compositor tomó el escenario llamado Alex Lora. Su banda, El Tri, fue fundada en 1968, el año en que nací, como tres souls en mi mente. Alex y su grupo han influido en el rock español como ningún otro. Y cuando escuchas cuán popular ha sido esa música, comenzó en gran medida con Alex y sus compañeros de banda. El Tri son los padres de la rock mexicana. Es un gran honor tenerlos aquí hoy con nosotros y en nombre de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, muy orgulloso de presentar esta resolución a uno de los poblamos. El pueblos, ¿cómo lo decimos? Pueblas. Pueblas, Pueblas, greatest sons, Alex Lora.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. It's an honor for me, como poblano, ahora en el festejo de los 150 años de la Batalla de Puebla, estar aquí con ustedes en el City Hall de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, representando a los poblanos en el exterior, y tengo el gusto de tener al maestro Roberto Velster, representando a la Sociedad de Autores y Compositores de México, que está aquí con nosotros también. Está aquí el maestro.
A moment, please.
Oh, sorry.
Va traducir, va traducir lo que dice.
Can you start again?
Es un honor para mí, como poblano.
It's a great pleasure for me, as a son of Puebla, representar a los poblanos en el exterior. To represent the residents from Puebla that live here in the international grounds.
En este 150 aniversario de la Batalla de Puebla.
On this 150th anniversary of the Puebla War.
Y contamos con la presencia del maestro Roberto Velster.
And we count with the presence of the master.
Aplausos para él, por favor. Representando a la Sociedad de Autores y Compositores de México.
The Society of the Composers and the Authors of Mexico.
De la cual tengo el honor y el gusto de ser miembro.
Of which I have the honor and pleasure to be a member.
A todos ustedes muchas gracias por este reconocimiento.
And to all of you, thank you very much for this recognition.
Que Dios bendiga a los poblanos en el exterior.
May God bless all the residents from Puebla that are here in international ground.
Que vivan los poblanos, que viva Puebla, y que viva Rockarrrrrrr!
Gracias, gracias. I'm going to go to Pedro.
Mr. Weezer, he's got lungs.
Pedro Ramos from La Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior. Pedro.
Gracias, José, por siempre preocuparte por nosotros y por siempre tener la gran fiesta del Cinco de Mayo ahí en el pueblo de Los Ángeles.
Thank you, José, for always worrying us and for always celebrating the Cinco de Mayo here there in Los Angeles.
Yo quisiera pasarle mi tiempo a el presidente de la Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, señor Don Alfredo Gómez, que ha hecho mucho por poblanos.
I would like to give the mic round to the president of Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
Buenos días a todos.
Good morning, everyone.
Distinguidos miembros del Consilio.
Esteemed members of City Council.
As president.
Recibir este reconocimiento.
For me, a great pleasure to receive this recognition.
In nombre de todos mis paisanos poblanos y comunidad mexicana en general. And also on behalf of Mexican community in general.
Eso hace que recordemos aquella hora que batalla del Cinco de Mayo de 1862.
This helps us remember that great battle of May the 5th, 1862.
Donde nuestros hermanos poblanos ofrendaron su vida en aras de la libertad que hoy tenemos.
Offer their life in order to get freedom on behalf of all the countrymen.
Quiero hacer un reconocimiento muy especial.
I would like to state a special recognition.
A nuestro buen amigo y concejal, José Weezer.
To our great friend and councilman, Mr. José Weezer.
Ya que siempre ha trabajado con nosotros, nos ha apoyado en todo lo que hacemos nosotros los poblanos.
Since he has always worked with us and always supported us.
Principalmente como la Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
And everything we do as residents from Puebla and everything that we do as poblanos who live here in the United States.
En nombre, en nombre de la Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
On behalf of Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
Y de toda la comunidad poblana y mexicana.
And of all the people from Puebla and Mexicans.
recibimos con orgullo esta proclamación y reconocimiento.
We receive with great pride this recognition and this mention.
Porque con eso, año con año recordaremos aquella hora que batalla y a nuestros hermanos.
Because with this.
Year after year, we'll remember the battle.
And our brothers.
Por nuestra patria y por nuestra libertad.
Who fought for our country and for our liberty. Thank you very much.
Muchísimas gracias. And now, ladies and gentlemen, Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Let's, here to give a Jose Weezer and for the poblanos in Los Angeles, I want to give my thanks to La Unión de los Poblanos. It's great to be here with Alex Lora. He is, well, I'm going to switch it around. Mick Jagger is Britain's answer to Alex Lora, not vice versa. And El Tri defined rock in Espanol, defined an era, and continues to rock like no others, and it is a great joy to have him here in Los Angeles. And for La Unión de Poblanos, all the poblanos that we have here in Los Angeles, but for all of us, this is a very significant holiday. And, Mr. President, it is a significant holiday as well for African Americans because when you look at the victory of what happened in Puebla, La Batalla de Puebla, the French Army was supplying and resupplying the Confederate Army in our Civil War at the same time. And many people say that because of the defeat they experienced there and their desire, which was to break the United States into two at the time strategically, the French weren't able to do that, the Confederates were weakened, and because of that, the United States Army gathered the strength to win the Civil War and to end slavery. So when we look at the impact that we have always had in connecting with our brothers and sisters south of the border, we look at our symbol here of our city, which has a Spanish, a Mexican, a Californian, and an American flag, we realize that the celebration of Cinco de Mayo is our celebration of Cinco de Mayo. So thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Let's have a great Cinco de Mayo, remembering that history, rocking in Espanol, and thanking the poblanos in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, everyone. Que viva Puebla! Que viva Cinco de Mayo! And last but not least, we also visited today by Dr. Hayes Bautista, who has recently written a book about Cinco de Mayo and its significance to the United States, as Mr. Garcetti just said, and how this celebration is not something new. It goes way back to the time of the Civil War, and it's time to set history straight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And as you get ready for your next presentation, I'm going to, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, please come forward. We're going to go to item five. Mr. Weezer, I'm going to ask you to cede the podium for two minutes for Mr. Sacks, and then we'll go into your next presentation. So before Mr. Sacks comes forward, Mr. Englander, item three, I'm sorry, it's item three, item three, the commissioner. Mr. Englander, if you'd kick things off.
Absolutely, thank you. It's a great honor and a privilege to introduce Alan Scobin as we, Alan, if, I'm going to ask you to step forward, but in light of time and the interest of your valuable time and the fact that we could lose a quorum, I'm going to go pretty quickly on this. And just to let you know, colleagues, that Alan Scobin has been a dedicated public servant for many, many years. In fact, he was on the Police Commission appointed originally in 2003, and has had various assignments from transportation and traffic, counterterrorism intelligence, the reserve program overseeing the Valley Bureau of Operations, served as the chair of the Oversight Committee of the Office of Public Safety. He's a sworn, well, we won't hold this against him, sworn sheriff deputy as well, reserve, and he's just a great, great individual. He's a resident of CD-12, and a great honor to call a good friend, and he's a terrific family man as well. He dedicates so much time to the community and to the city, has done so his entire life. His wife, Romi, who's here as well, recently retired as a public servant as well from the city of San Fernando, where she served many years within law enforcement. And it's my privilege and my honor to ask for your vote in support of Alan to the police, from the Police Commission to the Fire Commission. So this is to appoint him as the next Fire Commissioner to the City of Los Angeles. His expertise, his experience is invaluable. And I know we have one public speaker card. If we can have that card come forward, so we can go ahead and take this vote.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Congratulations on your appointment, sir. My question would be to the council and to you, you might have read the news regarding some problems with the budget and the cuts to the Fire Department. And the actions the council took regarding the cuts were based on some misinformation on timing for the fire, the runs, for the emergency runs. Here's my problem with all that information. The rank and file for the Fire Department didn't step up. They must have some representation in the rank and file that would say, you know, the management is saying this, but we're experiencing that. Because they're the ones doing the running. And then the information is passed through to make a presentation. So my question would be, can you afford or can you make some kind of insurance that the rank and file would be able to step up and say, hey, you know what? What's being reported before the fact instead of after the fact is answered to? Because now the council is stuck making, taking the egg off their face, taking the egg off the mayor's face, taking the egg off everybody's face because of this misinterpretation of the information that was given to the council so that they could make cuts to fire service. You know, in the county, they're doing something with the Sheriff's Department where they want to have hearings regarding problems in the county jail. And they're trying to do something so they offer some kind of guarantee to the people coming in to testify about what's occurring. So again, I say, the rank and file is aware of what was going on with the runs, and let's say the runs are taking eight minutes, but the information is being put down as four minutes. Somebody should have stepped up.
Thank you very, thank you, thank you. And.
Okay, I'll have only one, thank you, Mr. Sacks, only one speaker on this item, it's Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Corretz is requesting removal from the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleague, for your intro. Big question for me is the resources and the services. You've been on the Police Commission for a long time, you understand the needs of safety being first. I'm very upset right now for two reasons. We had a medical emergency up in the Palisades. It took 13 minutes to get an ambulance there, totally unacceptable. We had a fire in Brentwood up a canyon, and it took 11 minutes to get an apparatus there, which is less than a mile away, right at the end of Sunset Encanter, it happens to be a fire station. It isn't the frequency of calls to the fire station that should determine if you get a, be it a engine company or be it an ambulance, it's the need. My community in the northern part of the district, in the Palisades and in Brentwood, thanks to the 405 insanity going on of the widening that completely gridlocks my district, and with the Palisades being an isolated community, only one way in on Sunset or another way on the PCH, time is a critical factor. First thing I'd like you to look at when you get on that commission is the safety of my constituents that are at risk with those two examples, most recently in the last couple of months. So it isn't the number, it's the timeframe. And we didn't have this 405 craziness four years ago, we have it now. We didn't have PCA construction, but we have it now. It's the only way to get in. I'd like your thoughts on restoring an engine company to the Palisades and keeping adequate support for issues that come up that take 11 minutes or 13 minutes, totally unacceptable.
Guys get together right after this, we're about to lose a quorum, if that's okay with you?
Absolutely. But I'd just like a comment on the record, Mr. Englander.
All right, I made a note to get with you, sir.
Pardon me?
I made a note to get with you to talk about that.
Great, thank you very much.
No, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, it's an honor and a privilege to, in seconds, be able to call Mr. Scobin, a commissioner again, and I know that he's going to look at all these issues. We've got a lot of issues to look at the Fire Department, and I am absolutely 100% confident that he's the best person for that position to do that work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Labonge, for a quick.
I call an I-vote for Commissioner Alex Scobin.
All right, thank you. With that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
We have one more item, I think it's items.
Can we send that forthwith, please?
Forthwith, I think it's item seven, is it?
Yes.
And we have a card for Mr. Arnold Sacks while Mr. Weezer is taking photos. Mr. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, please come forward.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. I held this item. Just again, on this, there is no cost for, associated in the item, there is no cost breakdown for what it would be to install these banners. Is this being done by the city? Does this include overtime? Or is this being done through the Business Improvement District or the Property Improvement District that would be representative of the Tarzana Neighborhood Council? Or is it even being done by the Tarzana Neighborhood Council and they're footing the bill? The sources for funding for these different councils and meetings should be more transparent to the public, especially during this time of the budget, so that the population that lives in the city of LA has a better understanding of how the money is being spent. Don't take it personal.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. No speakers in the queue on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now I want to recognize Commissioner Janethia Hayes. Good to see you, Madam Commissioner. Okay, if Mr. Weezer could please come forward for our final and very, very important presentation, Hispanic Scholarship Fund. Mr. Weezer, thank you for your cooperation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and it's fitting that as we celebrate an early Cinco de Mayo here today, it is also an appropriate time to highlight the work and efforts of one of the country's premier organizations in helping Latino students go to college. And of course, I'm speaking than none other than Hispanic Scholarship Fund, which since it's established, since when it was established in 1975, has given away more than $360 million in college scholarships. That is incredible. And as a former recipient of this scholarship, I know how important it is for us to provide our young Latino students the ability to go on and complete their college education. Numerous studies have shown that it's not so much the academics when Latino students drop out of college, but it's the inability to make it financially. And as we look at this country's population and the increasing demand on more minority students and Latinos to be educated, to provide the workforce for the future of this country, it becomes more important in terms of the work that the Hispanic Scholarship Fund is doing. Not only is it providing opportunities for young people to fulfill their dreams, but it's fulfilling and a very important public policy issue for this country, if not the most important public policy issue next to national security. I myself, like I said, am a recipient. I remember I was back in the East Coast and I needed some funding to complete my studies and get to Sacramento to start my fellowship. And if it wasn't for the check I received from the Hispanic Scholarship Fund, who knows how I would have made it to fulfill my final year in the East Coast and also to make it to my fellowship. So for that, I am forever grateful to the Hispanic Scholarship Fund. But we are here today not only to recognize the Hispanic Scholarship Fund for the great work they do, but also to remind everybody that here this Tuesday, we're thrilled to welcome the Hispanic Scholarship Fund's Leaders in Education Awards to Los Angeles for the second year in a row. The awards will be at the JW Merit Hotel at LA Live. Anybody who is interested can go to hsf.net for more information, and we'd love to see everyone and anyone there, including you, Mr. Labonge. I just like picking on Mr. Labonge, wants to know how? Even Irishmen. I'd like to recognize some important visitors this morning, several who flew out just to be here with us this morning, and we want to thank them for that. We want to thank them for their patience today. But first, I want to recognize, and he'll come up to speak in a little bit, Frank Alvarez, the president and CEO of the Hispanic Scholarship Fund. Thank you for joining us. Anthony Salzito, Vice President for North American Financial Integration of Toyota Motor Sales USA. Thank you for joining us today. Roy Jasso, many of you know him here in Los Angeles. He is a Wells Fargo Community Development Officer in the LA metro area. Welcome, Roy. Maria Salinas, the Hispanic Scholarship Fund Local Board Chair. Thank you for your work, Maria. And many of you may also recognize this face. You may also have been interviewed by her. I'm proud of her, not only for the work she I'm proud of her, not only for the work she's doing in the community and helping HSF, but also she is a Cal alum, Go Bears. We have with us none other than Kim Baldonado from NBC4. Let's give her a big round of applause. She is also an HSF alum who will host the Leaders in Education Award next Tuesday, May 8th, and I believe you hosted last year's as well, right? And did a good job at that. She's a much better presenter than I am, and so with that, let me present Kim Baldonado to the microphone. Kim?
Come on, let's give her a round of applause for all of the great work that all of you do. Welcome, and Mr. Weezer, I think almost put you on shaky ground since this place is loaded with USC and UCLA grants. Welcome.
Got to balance it out with some Cal Bears. As a former recipient of an HSF scholarship, two years in a row, I can attest to the value of this organization in helping Latinos earn college degrees. As Jose touched on, nationally, only 21% of Latino adults have an associate's degree or higher. And with Latinos being the fastest-growing minority in this country, it is essential not only to the individual college student, but to our economy as a whole, that we have an educated Latino population. So I salute and am proud to support the Hispanic Scholarship Fund in the work that they do. Right now, I'd like to introduce Frank Alvarez, president and CEO of HSF.
Thanks, thanks, yeah. President Wesson and members of the council, I wanted to say just thanks to council member Weezer, who's been an inspiration for all of us, and to Kim for all the good work she does. She's one of about 53,000 alums that we have and that we're very proud of. Today, I'd like to do just a couple of things, if I might. One is to announce who these winners are for us that we're going to be honoring on Tuesday. They are from your community. They are leaders who have been engaged in education for a long period of time, and so these people are individuals that you will recognize perhaps not by name, but by affiliation in some cases. So we can tell you that the school of the year this year is Wilson High School that we will be awarding for the good work they've done for a number of years. I know that there's at least one alum here, but there may be others who are part of this thing, the success has been over there. Can't get my computer to work. So we also have Dr. Susan Murillo, who's going to be awarded the Volunteer of the Year, and I will have to get you the other names, I'm sorry, because this thing is just not cooperating for me at the moment. Know that what we're doing is we're acknowledging the good work that's going on in this community, and it's happening everywhere. We wouldn't be able to do these awards if it weren't for our funders, and they include, amongst others, the Wells Fargo Bank, who's been a tremendous supporter to us, and Anheuser-Busch. And we have been fortunate to have the support of many organizations, one of which is particularly important for us, as I announced to you today for the first time publicly, that we at HSF, after 37 years in San Francisco, will be relocating to the center of the capital of Hispanics in the US. We're coming to Los Angeles at the end of October. And with it, we're bringing with it the support that we have made to you here in this community. You heard that we have awarded $360 million over the life of the fund. Let me zero that in just a little bit for you. In Los Angeles, the greater Southern California area, it's been the number-one area for our scholarships. We have awarded $57 million to your community. We have over 8,200 individuals in this community who have received a baccalaureate degree thanks to the support of corporations like those that I've mentioned. But the move to this community would not have occurred had it not been for the wonderful and ongoing long-term support of Toyota Motor Services. They've made it possible for us to be able to go to a new building that they have there on 190th Guardian, I think, Biscayino is in your district, sir, so we'll be maybe, we'll be bringing jobs to the city, and we're looking forward very much to it. So with that, if I might, a board member, an executive committee member of the board of the Hispanic Scholarship Fund, is Vice President and Controller for Toyota Motor Services, Anthony Salcedo. Anthony?
Thanks, Frank. Good morning, everybody. On behalf of Toyota Motor Sales, I'd like to be the first to officially welcome HSF to Los Angeles. I think it's great. As a proud sponsor of HSF, we fully support the mission of HSF, and that mission is to put a degree in every Latino household. I also want to congratulate the awardees, and also I want to congratulate HSF on this recognition. Finally, I just want to say, Frank, it's so great to have you at the Toyota Plaza. We hope that you make it your home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and again, a big thank you to HSF. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd love to now present this resolution to HSF for the wonderful work you've done, over $360 million in scholarships to needy students, and also for continuing the work you do to improve education for all and the equity that provides for all, and also for coming to Los Angeles and having one of your headquarters here. Congratulations on behalf of the City of Los Angeles.
Thanks so much, thanks.
And bless you all. That's an unbelievable accomplishment, and you're actually changing the lives of children throughout this country. Words can't describe how appreciative we all are. Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. With that said, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Thank you. Motions for posting and referral.
Consider those motions posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Kukoyan requests to be excused on May 8th and 9th. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on May 9th. Councilmember Labonge requests to leave at 11:00 AM on May 11th, and Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused on May 11th.
Without objection.
That clears the desk.
I don't believe it. We made it. We were challenged, quorum issues, but we got through. Members' announcements, announcements. No, Mr. Labonge, at your desk.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Our crew has told me that...
Okay, we got it, we got it. Thank you, Channel 35 up there. This week, Mr. Garcetti and I, on Sunday, will have the first Los Angeles River Run and Walk. It's going to be at Las Feliz Boulevard, then Los Angeles River, run all the way along down to Marsh Park, and I want to thank Mr. Garcetti and his staff as we initiate this, and hopefully one day we'll have a Los Angeles River Run Marathon. So that is this Sunday, just come out bright and early to Las Feliz Boulevard, and the benefits of Los Angeles Parks Foundation, as well as the Los Angeles River Foundation and the Friends of the Los Angeles River, this Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And before I call on Mr. Rosendahl, to Mr. Biscayino and Mr. Coretts, thank you for the item before last. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Beyond Baroque, which is an incredible facility in Venice, right on Venice Boulevard, is having an Art for Music Sake this Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, and that's 681 Venice Boulevard. Beyond Baroque will host its first art auction with works donated by over 25 artists. The benefit will raise funds for the organization's Beyond Music Program and will feature music performed by saxophonist Urick Krieger. The reception and viewing is scheduled from 3:00 to 4:00, and the auction will immediately follow. Please come to that. I'll be there in the beginning to open it up, and I look forward to your coming and buying some of the art, and that will be donated to continue programs going forward. Beyond Baroque, this Sunday, May 6th, from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Announcements, members, any other announcements? I'd like for everyone in the council chambers to please rise for our adjourned motions. If everyone could please rise, Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Wesson, just the other day, you got the note, Junior Seau, a tremendous individual, 43 years old, born and raised in Southern California, Oceanside High School, All-Star football player, went to USC. And reading the notes, he had the adjustment to going from Oceanside into USC, but made a tremendous impact as a college football player, then to be selected the fifth player in his draft by the San Diego Chargers. Played 20 years of professional football. Every day's an absolute blessing, and I wish we had the ability to reach out in times of needs, so people who go in such a tough way get help before they have to go. You could see from all the things that were talked about, Junior Seau made a difference in the lives of everybody that's around him. So we stand in the German of a great Trojan, a great professional football player, and through this tragedy, hope we can learn things that will help those who we are so proud of, our great athletes, and Junior Seau certainly was, and I ask for all members. He survived by his wife and children and many friends in his family and his mother and father.
Well said, Mr. Labonge, and I too hope that all of the suicide prevention entities throughout the country really try to use this. When I saw his mother say, "Take me," I'm sure he would not want his mother to be going through the agony that she showed us on television 24 hours ago. Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, I agree with you with what you just said. Suicide is a serious reality, and unfortunately, just to digress for a second, a lot of the returning veterans are in that zone, and we need to look after all of our people. This is in memory of Dr. Marian Ziggman. It is with deep sadness that I announce that Dr. Marian Ziggman, Professor Emeritus of Clinical Psychology and Psychiatry at UCLA, passed last Monday, April 30th. She was a longtime resident of Cantor Canyon in my district and will be dearly missed. Dr. Ziggman was an internationally acclaimed scholar and teacher. She obtained her PhD in psychology from Boston University and was postdoctoral fellow at UCLA before journeying the faculty in 1977. Dr. Ziggman's research focused around autism. She was the co-founder and co-director of the UCLA Center of Autism Research and Treatment, and well as the director of the UCLA Collaborative Program of Excellence in Autism. With an accomplished career spanning over 30 years, Dr. Ziggman retired in 2010 and left her mark on the field with a rich history of significant scientific contributions. Her research program has made a major impact in understanding autism, anxiety, developmental disabilities, and the effects of nutrition and low birth weight on cognitive development. Throughout her career, Dr. Ziggman has provided outstanding and distinguished teaching and service to the university and academic community. She has supervised the research of 12 postdoctoral fellows and the doctoral training of more than 30 graduate students in clinical and developmental psychology. Among her many accomplishments, Marian was widely published author in her field with more than 155 peer-reviewed research reports and over 55 book chapters. In May 2009, she received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the International Meeting for Autism Research. Dr. Marian Ziggman is survived by her daughter, son, and grandchildren. Her husband, David, was also a professor at UCLA and passed away in 2001. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I have two adjourned motions. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Ethel Lee Whitehurst Cromwell, who was born in 1940, passed away on May 2nd, 2012. She has been a very religious person since childhood, baptized initially by Reverend Steels at the Baptist Temple Church in Shreveport, Louisiana. She subsequently moved to Los Angeles and joined the Greater Ebenezer Missionary Baptist Church in the 8th District. She met and married her husband in 1958, where they had two children, Desiree and Leonard Jr. She came to Los Angeles with her family at the age of nine and attended schools in Venice, California. Also, she graduated from John C. Fremont High School in 1958. She was employed by Cedar Sinai Hospital, later by the County of Los Angeles, DPSS, as an eligibility worker, but retired early due to her disability. Although disabled, she was very active in the community, doing voter registration, phone banking for candidates, on occasion training volunteers to do candidate work. She was the life of the party, also cheery and uplifting. She was sought after by many elected officials, worker, campaign. She is the sister of Bobby Jean Anderson, who ran, when she ran for Assembly, her sister was her campaign office manager. She also worked for elected officials such as Maxine Waters, Rod Wright, and Marguerite Archie Hudson. And she was a firm member of the Black Women's Forum. She passed away on May 2nd, Centennial Hospital, and she is a loving mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, aunt, and cousin and friend. She survived by her daughter, Desiree, her son, Leonard Jr., and her sister, Bobby Jean Anderson.
Mr. Parks, can we all?
Yes, we can do that. And then also, her services are May 11th, Friday, 10:00 AM at Greater Ebenezer Baptist Church at 5300 South Dinkar. The repast will follow immediately at Greater Ebenezer. We'd also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Claude C. Davis, who died April 30th, 2012. Claude was a graduate from Tuskegee as part of the Class 44G in 1944. Like many of the Tuskegee pilots, he had put forth his best effort and proceeded step by step through the rigorous process to earn his wings, that included written and practical tests with numerous opportunities to wash out at any time. His quote was, "The first step was being accepted as a flight cadet and passed the physical, then came 10 weeks of pre-flight training, learning the systems that supported flight, like how to use the radio, basic meteorology, and so on." After passing the pre-flight, he was on to primary flight training for 10 to 12 weeks. At that point, we actually got to fly. The last step was basic flight training, where he had the combat training, learned air combat. When we were done with that, we had to make the decisions about what type of advanced training. We wanted to have bomber, fighter, et cetera. I chose bomber. Claude, in advanced training, was put in the AT-10 twin-engine trainer. Where he finished that training, he was sent to Douglas Army Air Base in Arizona. Then the fun really began. At the age of 23, he was introduced to the B-25 bomber. Now qualified as a B-25 pilot, he was sent to Godman Field, next to Fort Knox in Kentucky, where a black bombardier group was formed, the 616 Bomber Squadron. With orders to prepare to fight the Japanese in March 1945, his squadron was sent to Freeman Field in Indiana and became part of the 477 Bombardier Group. While Freeman Field had a longer runway that could easily handle the B-25s, it was also the site of major events that highlighted once again the segregationist policies of the US. Armed services during World War II, Davis recalled, there were two clubs set up. Club 1 was for blacks, but it wasn't referred to as an officers' club, it was a trainee. Club 2 was for white instructors, but there were a couple of guys who were determined to be activists and recruited other blacks to join them and trying to be served at Club 2. It did not go well. Many were arrested and confined to quarters, and my 616 squadron was ultimately sent back to Godman Field, along with the 617. We never flew in combat because President Truman dropped the bomb in August and the war was over. Claude wasn't released immediately after the war. He was assigned to Fort Lewis in Washington until 1946, where he became a civilian. He later kept flying and ultimately joined the National Guard, where the Korean War started. He ended up in false deals, accepting that he would see action again. Because he had continued to fly, he thought he'd probably be assigned to spotter plane pilot, flying slow, low, near enemy lines and easy targets. Claude stayed in National Guard and continued to serve even as he graduated from college and developed distribution of real estate businesses. Funeral services will be held at Inglewood Cemetery, Martrary, located at 3800 West Manchester in Inglewood, and that's on May 8th, 9:00 AM.
Thank you. Members, any more adjourned motions? Members, we are adjourned.